Can we call the Lowell Public School Committee meeting to order? Please rise and we'll salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Would Madam Secretary take the role?
Mr. Lay.
Present here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Ms. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Chow.
Ms. Chun.
Here.
Mr. Rossi.
Here.
Ms. Doherty.
Here.
Six present, one absent.
Thank you. And tonight for a special order of business, we have a spotlight on excellence, the Science and Engineering Fair winners. I wonder if Dr. Boyd would introduce that for us.
Thank you. Ms. Desmond, our chief academic officer, will provide the introduction to Ms. Santelman, who will then take it from there. Ms. Desmond?
Thank you Superintendent Boyd. This spotlight is on the recipients of the Science and Engineering Fair awards, both in middle school and high school. And Elaine Santelman, the coordinator for Science and Social Studies, is here to provide additional background, along with Laura Schofield, who is our district support specialist for Science and Social Studies.
Thank you. Well, good evening. It's nice to see you all again. I'm here to talk about the 2023 Science and Engineering Fair and to give our winning middle and high school students an opportunity to share their projects with you. The thing I love the most about our Science and Engineering Fair is that it gives students a structured process by which to explore their own curiosity about science and innovative ideas about engineering. While we aim to make our science instruction in the schools student-centered and inquiry-based as possible, we do have to meet certain content standards. With the Science and Engineering Fair, however, students can explore any topic that captures their imagination using the science and engineering practices that they learn in school. So it's a chance to really be a scientist or an engineer. We are supported in this effort by our partnership with Massachusetts Science and Engineering Fair, who provide training, coaching, and administrative support for our fair. My colleague Laura Schofield, the district science and social studies specialist, was also a key player in making sure that this year's fair went off without a hitch. Before you meet our students, I would like to shine a light on the people who really make the Science and Engineering Fair a reality. Our STEM club advisors are teachers who have made the commitment of time and energy to support these students with their projects after school. These clubs offer at no cost to the students, and they build equity into the initiative by providing an opportunity for any student to participate, whether or not they have support with the project at home. Without the dedication of the STEM club advisors, we wouldn't have a Science and Engineering Fair. I want to make sure they get the acknowledgement they deserve. So we have two STEM club advisors with us tonight, Mark McKeller from the Bartlett Community Partnership and Emily Steinberg from Lowell High School. So I'll let them take it from here to explain what they do and introduce their students. So, Mr. McKeller, why don't you come on up?
My David the Cup. Is that okay there? Okay. Elaine asked me to speak about how we operate the STEM club at the Bartlett. I teach seventh and eighth grade science. My partner Jess Bousa teaches fifth and sixth grade science, and we invited all sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students to participate. The trick in picking a science project is Jess and I provide a lot of resources for a lot of different ideas, but the students have to pick something that resonates with them, something that they're intellectually interested in and emotionally invested in. Doing a science fair project is difficult. It takes a lot of work, a lot of perseverance. It's often tedious to do and repeat experiments. Our two students chose a project about the water quality in our school, and they chose that after a couple of days of iffy water in the school. And it does speak to concerns by the students and staff about the general condition of our building, but it inspired them, and it was important to them, so they spent a lot of time and a lot of energy doing this work, testing and retesting. They did a wonderful job, and I'm so proud to introduce our two students, Sapphire and JD.
So what we did for our science project was school water testing, because a lot of people have been questioning why the water looks and tastes weird, and we wanted to see if it was actually healthy enough for us to be drinking. And so what we did was we went around the school and we collected water from classrooms that we were able to access.
We also went to the gym and the girls' bathroom and all parts of our school, which is elementary and middle school.
The way that we collected our information was using test strips that we got from a teacher who kind of helped us start our project, Ms. McNulty. And the way that we use the test strips was that once we put the water on the test strips, it would change color, and we used a color code chart that would tell us how much of each chemical was in the water.
As a result, we found out that in different classrooms, the school water had higher amounts of chemicals and some had lower amounts of chemicals. And for instance, one classroom had tested positive for lead, and we were a bit concerned about that, so we retested it, and it turned out to be completely fine. We also did some research on how much of the chemical should have been in the water.
We also did some research about the definitions of the chemicals, because we didn't really know what they meant or what they exactly were. So we looked those up, and we also added what it does to your body.
In conclusion, we found out that the school water is safe for all students and staff members that use both the sinks and the bubblers in our school. We were also hoping that you would take into consideration fixing and cleaning our bubblers so that it would be more accessible for all kids with water bottles, because right now the water bubblers don't really have a lot of help with water bottles.
Good evening. Can we call the Lowell Public School Committee meeting to order? Please rise and we'll salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Would Madam Secretary take the role?
Mr. Lay.
Present here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Ms. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Chow.
Ms. Chun.
Here.
Mr. Rossi.
Here.
Ms. Doherty.
Here.
Six present, one absent.
Thank you. And tonight for a special order of business, we have a spotlight on excellence, the Science and Engineering Fair winners. I wonder if Dr. Boyd would introduce that for us?
Thank you. Ms. Desmond, our chief academic officer, will provide the introduction to Ms. Santeleman, who will then take it from there. Ms. Desmond?
Thank you Superintendent Boyd. This spotlight is on the recipients of the Science and Engineering Fair awards, both in middle school and high school. And Elaine Santeleman, the coordinator for Science and Social Studies, is here to provide additional background, along with Laura Schofield, who is our district support specialist for Science and Social Studies.
Thank you. Well, good evening. It's nice to see you all again. I'm here to talk about the 2023 Science and Engineering Fair and to give our winning middle and high school students an opportunity to share their projects with you. The thing I love the most about our Science and Engineering Fair is that it gives students a structured process by which to explore their own curiosity about science and innovative ideas about engineering. While we aim to make our science instruction in the schools student-centered and inquiry-based as possible, we do have to meet certain content standards. With the Science and Engineering Fair, however, students can explore any topic that captures their imagination using the science and engineering practices that they learn in school. So it's a chance to really be a scientist or an engineer. We are supported in this effort by our partnership with Massachusetts Science and Engineering Fair, who provide training, coaching, and administrative support for our fair. My colleague Laura Schofield, the district science and social studies specialist, was also a key player in making sure that this year's fair went off without a hitch. Before you meet our students, I would like to shine a light on the people who really make the Science and Engineering Fair a reality. Our STEM club advisors are teachers who have made the commitment of time and energy to support these students with their projects after school. These clubs offer at no cost to the students, and they build equity into the initiative by providing an opportunity for any student to participate, whether or not they have support with the project at home. Without the dedication of the STEM club advisors, we wouldn't have a Science and Engineering Fair. I want to make sure they get the acknowledgement they deserve. So we have two STEM club advisors with us tonight, Mark McKeller from the Bartlett Community Partnership and Emily Steinberg from Lowell High School. So I'll let them take it from here to explain what they do and introduce their students. So, Mr. McKeller, why don't you come on up?
My David the Cup. Is that okay there? Okay. Elaine asked me to speak about how we operate the STEM club at the Bartlett. I teach seventh and eighth grade science. My partner Jess Bousa teaches fifth and sixth grade science, and we invited all sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students to participate. The trick in picking a science project is Jess and I provide a lot of resources for a lot of different ideas, but the students have to pick something that resonates with them, something that they're intellectually interested in and emotionally invested in. Doing a science fair project is difficult. It takes a lot of work, a lot of perseverance. It's often tedious to do and repeat experiments. Our two students chose a project about the water quality in our school, and they chose that after a couple of days of iffy water in the school. And it does speak to concerns by the students and staff about the general condition of our building, but it inspired them, and it was important to them, so they spent a lot of time and a lot of energy doing this work, testing and retesting. They did a wonderful job, and I'm so proud to introduce our two students, Sapphire and JD.
So what we did for our science project was school water testing, because a lot of people have been questioning why the water looks and tastes weird, and we wanted to see if it was actually healthy enough for us to be drinking. And so what we did was we went around the school and we collected water from classrooms that we were able to access.
We also went to the gym and the girls' bathroom and all parts of our school, which is elementary and middle school.
The way that we collected our information was using test strips that we got from a teacher who kind of helped us start our project, Ms. McNulty. And the way that we use the test strips was that once we put the water on the test strips, it would change color, and we used a color code chart that would tell us how much of each chemical was in the water.
As a result, we found out that in different classrooms, the school water had higher amounts of chemicals and some had lower amounts of chemicals. And for instance, one classroom had tested positive for lead, and we were a bit concerned about that, so we retested it, and it turned out to be completely fine. We also did some research on how much of the chemical should have been in the water.
We also did some research about the definitions of the chemicals, because we didn't really know what they meant or what they exactly were. So we looked those up, and we also added what it does to your body.
In conclusion, we found out that the school water is safe for all students and staff members that use both the sinks and the bubblers in our school. We were also hoping that you would take into consideration fixing and cleaning our bubblers so that it would be more accessible for all kids with water bottles, because right now the water bubblers don't really have a lot of help with water bottles.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Emily Steinberg. I'm a biology teacher at Lowell High School, and I also run the Science League and STEM Club at the high school. I've been doing science extracurricular activities for about 22 years now, and we've been participating in the regional and state science and district science fairs for eight or nine years now. So just to piggyback off of what Elaine and Mark have said, STEM club and designing a science fair project is no easy feat. The students need to be motivated. They need to really work through the process, try out different ideas, come up with things that are feasible, that will work within the constraints of what we have available at the high school. And our partnership with MSF makes this far more easy to do than we could on our own. They provide us with money for supplies, they provide us with mentors and coaches, people who are directly in the industries these students' projects are investigating, and so we can really get an up-to-date, you know, hands-on-the-ground perspective and advice on how to make these projects come through. So at the high school, we divide the STEM club into a ninth-grade freshman academy club and then a 10th through 12th, which is what I run. All the students participate in the district fair, but then the 10th, 11th, and 12th graders who would like to move on to the regional state fair can, and we go through rigorous paperwork to get them there. And then if they qualify, they can then move on to the state science fair. So I had two students participate in the regional fair on March 3rd, and those two students have been moved on to the state science fair, which is at MIT on Friday. So we'll be traveling to Cambridge on Friday for them to compete. One of our students is here with us tonight. Her name is Tiffany Tran. I'll let her discuss her project with you, but I do want to mention that she won an outstanding microbiology project award at the regional fair for her project, so it really is an outstanding piece of work.
Good evening, everyone. So the title of my science project is Harnessing the Intelligence of Phasarium Polycephalum to Mold a Better Society. And phasarium polycephalum is just a scientific name for slime molds. So what I did was I grew slime mold. They're the yellow blobs seen there. And I currently have samples at home, but I didn't want to freak you guys out. So I had two hypotheses for this experiment. So the first one, the first part of my experiment, I created mazes, and we have a simple maze, as you can see over there, and then complex mazes. And what I did was I put pieces of these slime molds into the maze, and I hypothesized that they would merge together and find the shortest path to solve the maze. And they did that about half the time in both the simple and complex mazes, and they did find the shortest path. So I applied that logic of finding the shortest path into my second part of the experiment, which was creating transportation networks using slime molds. So if you see in the middle, we have Africa, the United States of America, and then Massachusetts. And my hypothesis was to replicate the highway systems in all three different areas using slime molds, because apparently they can find the shortest routes between different destinations. And if you look at the visuals, so Africa and all three of them, they all have striking similarities between the slime mold predicted routes as well as the actual routes. And based on those results, I concluded that we could use slime molds to create transportation networks for developing countries. We can use them as a source to plan out these routes, help human engineers. And also, one cool thing is they could perhaps help us with cancer research, because tumors are all about fusing together to form a network and find a food source, which is essentially what slime molds do. They are different blobs, and they eventually merge together to find a food source. So if we can mathematically map that out, then we can do that with cancer tumors. So that's one step further in advancing research. So yeah, that's it.
So I want to, does anybody have any questions for our three scientists?
Ms. Chun.
Wow, amazing job, guys. I'm so proud of all the things that you guys are doing right now, the research, oh my goodness. So the one thing that I wanted to ask about the whole water system that's not, so do you guys happen to have like a filtered water bubbler, or is it just like the old-fashioned, the old-school water bubbler that you guys have at the school?
We don't really have filtered water. It's just the regular old water that it used to be. Yes, please.
Any other comments? Mr. Lay?
Don't go anywhere yet. I've got two questions for you. Number one is, you came up with the conclusion that the water is safe to drink. Did you get paid by a corporation to say that?
No.
And another question is, do you guys want to be a scientist in the future after this experiment?
We're not really sure. We really want to see like what kind of courses we're going to take in high school.
Well, good luck with that. Good luck. Thank you. Good job.
Before we say goodnight, I would just like to add a shameless plug for our next citizen engagement activity, where you'll get to see another event featuring our students. So on May 22nd, our Lowell Civic Day, our second annual Lowell Civic Day, will be held at the Lowell Memorial Auditorium. So we are seeking judges to come that morning to help us out. So any of you, anybody watching from home, please reach out to me. Any of our school administrators know how to find me, so.
Could you give the hours of that? I did see the email, but it didn't indicate what hours.
The involvement would be from 9:30 to 12:30 on the morning of May 22nd at Lowell Memorial Auditorium. So we have a very exciting program planned for you and would very much welcome your support at that, too. So thanks again for your support of all of our initiatives.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you. I do just want to, you know, kind of pile on. Our thanks for the staff, the leadership that has made this possible for our students is incredibly appreciated. I just think that's wonderful that you're taking extra time to give our students this opportunity. I'm going to say to our Bartlett team, way to work a cliffhanger, because honestly, I'm sitting here just waiting to hear what your results were going to be. That was presented very, very well. I'm also going to say, I have never been more frightened of mold in my life. I was frightened when I read the description. I'm more frightened now. So I feel better that you're on the case. I hope you stick with it, because that's among the most frightening things I've ever heard, that mold is kind of, has its own sentience and.
Disclaimer, this isn't the mold that you are familiar with and you find in your shower and all of that.
I don't know what you're talking about, my shower, but okay.
Um, one of our students is here with us tonight, her name is Tiffany Tran. Um, I'll let her discuss her project with you, but I do want to mention that she won um an outstanding microbiology project project award at the regional fair for her project. So it really is an outstanding piece of work.
So the prod, the title of my science project is harnessing the intelligence of Physarum Polycephalum to mold a better society. And Physarum Polycephalum is just a scientific name for slime molds. So what I did was I grew slime mold. They're the yellow blobs seen there. And I currently have samples at home, but I didn't want to freak you guys out. So I had two hypotheses for this experiment. So the first one, the first part of my experiment, I created mazes. And we have a simple maze, as you can see over there. And then complex mazes. And what I did was I put pieces of these slime molds into the maze, and I hypothesized that they would merge together and find the shortest path to solve the maze. And they did that um about half the time in both the simple and complex mazes. And they did find the shortest path. So I applied that logic of finding the shortest path into my second part of the experiment, which was creating transportation networks using slime molds. So if you see in the middle, we have um Africa, the United States of America, and then Massachusetts. And my hypothesis was to replicate the um highway systems in all three different areas using slime molds, because apparently they can find the shortest routes between different destinations. And if you look at the visuals, so Africa and all the, all three of them, they all have striking similarities between the slime mold predicted um routes, as well as the actual routes. And um based on those results, I concluded that we could use slime molds to create transportation networks um for developing countries. Uh, we can use them as a source to plan out these routes, um, help human engineers. And also, one cool thing is they could perhaps help us with cancer research, because tumors are all about fusing together to form a network and find a food source, which is essentially what slime molds do. They've are different um blobs and they eventually merge together to find a food source. So if we can mathematically map that out, then we can do that with um cancer tumors. So that's one step further in advancing research. So yeah, that's it.
So I want to, does, does anybody have any questions for our two, our three scientists?
Uh, Ms. Chun?
Wow, amazing job, guys. I'm so proud of all the things that you guys have, are doing right now, the research. Oh, my goodness. Um, so the one thing that I wanted to ask about the whole um, the water system that's not, um, so do you guys happen to have like a filtered water bubbler, or is it just like the old-fashioned, the old-school water bubbler that you guys have at the school?
Um, we don't really have filtered water. It's just um the regular old water that it used to be. Yes, please.
Any other comments, Mr. Lay?
Don't go anywhere yet. I got two questions for you. Number one is, you came up with the conclusion that the water is safe to drink. Did you get paid by a corporation to say that?
No.
And another question is, um, do you guys want to be a scientist in the future after this experiment?
Um, it, we're not really sure. We really uh want to see like what kind of courses we're going to take in high school.
Well, good luck with that. Good luck. Thank you. Good job.
Before we say goodnight, I would just like to add a shameless plug for our next citizen engagement activity where you'll get to see another um event featuring our students. So on May 22nd, our Lowell Civic Day, our Second Annual Lowell Civic Day, will be held at the Lowell Memorial Auditorium. So we are are seeking judges to come that morning to help us out. So any of you, anybody watching from home, please reach out to me. Um, any of our school administrators know how to find me, so.
Could you give the hours of that? I did see the email, but I didn't, it didn't indicate what hours.
The involvement would be from 9:30 to 12:30 on the morning of May 22nd at Lowell Memorial Auditorium. So we have a very exciting program planned for you and would very much welcome your support at that, too. So thanks again for your support of all of our initiatives.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you. Um, I do just want to, you know, kind of pile on. Our thanks for the staff, the the leadership that has made this possible for our students is incredibly appreciated. I I just think that's wonderful that you're taking extra time to to give our students this opportunity. Um, I'm going to say to our our Bartlett team, way to work a cliffhanger, because honestly, I'm sitting here just waiting to hear what your results were going to be. That was presented very, very well. I'm also going to say, I have never been more frightened of mold in my life. I was frightened when I read the description. I'm more frightened now. So I feel better that you're on the case. I hope you stick with it, because that's among the most frightening things I've ever heard, that mold is kind of, has its own sentience and.
Disclaimer, this isn't the mold that you are familiar with and you find in your shower and all of that. This is a.
I don't know what you're talking about, my shower, but okay.
It's a, it's a Protist that has this quorum, it's a quorum sensing. So you wouldn't really.
I'm not going to run into it in my everyday life. Okay, that's, that is a comfort. I'm glad.
Happy to help.
But thank you all, and congratulations. It really is a very impressive showing. Thank you all.
Ms. Thompson?
So I just want to say thank you to Sapphire and JD and Tiffany. Um, amazing work. I thought I was doing something back in the day when I had a volcano for my science fair, so I realize times have definitely increased over time. So I want to thank you guys for your investment in STEM and STEAM. Um, to the, to all of you who are supporting them, thank you so much, because it's opening up pathways that potentially they would not have known about. And I appreciate that so much, because now the potential um is exponential. And Tiffany, please keep the slime away from us, I think. When you said you didn't bring it to scare us, I was like, thank you. And I, and I mean that, but I, it's really, really just interesting in the ways that you were able to look at something. And it was, I mean, I really do want to know more about how it does find the direct pathway, so I would love to talk about that later. Thank you.
I'd just like to say thank you from up here and say how impressed I was by the Science and Engineering Engineering Fair itself. And then I'm not surprised to hear we're competing regionally and winning. Um, and I want to just point out for the Bartlett School kids, I think that everybody's online to get new water bubblers. What we, our plan was to do water fillers instead of the old-fashioned bubblers. And I believe we have a timeline of when they're going to be installed. It's been an ongoing challenge to try to get them into the schools, but that is the plan. And I know Dr. Boyd will correct me if I've, if I've got that wrong. And then I want to give a special thanks to all the staff, but also I see that the principal from the Bartlett is here, Peter Holtz. Thank you for attending tonight. Uh, it's just really wonderful to see the work our students are doing. And like Ms. Thompson said, certainly different kind of science experiments and projects than what I did when I was in school, too. I see Mr. Lay has his hand up again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want Tiffany to uh come up and and answer a question, like what inspired her to to participate in the science fair and what inspired you to pick mold as your subject of research?
Okay, well, I've always been interested in science from a young age, and I found the perfect opportunity to participate in the science fair and STEM Club at Lowell High. So I'm really grateful for Mrs. Steinberg for offering me all the resources and supplies needed to make this project happen. And um to answer your second question, well, this year I got the chance to take a dual-enrollment class in biology with Mrs. Steinberg. So I really wanted to concentrate my project on something related to biology, so I found the perfect um way to do it in slime molds. I didn't, I didn't know they existed until I did this project, so you learn something every day.
And I wonder if Ms. Santelman could just answer for us. Does every middle school participate in the Science and Engineering Fair?
I'm really glad you asked that, that traditionally we, we do um have representation from every middle school, but um since the pandemic, it's been difficult to find enough teachers to run these after-school clubs. Um, the level of burnout is real, you know, it's, it, it's, it's seen really across the district, we all know about it. And so I'm, I'm hopeful that as we get farther and farther away from the pandemic and everyone recovers more and has more energy to dedicate to these extracurricular activities, that we'll be able to go back to having all nine middle schools participate. But um it's, it's, it's a goal, and I hope that, you know, if any of the teachers are watching tonight, that they, they will be inspired by the work of of the two STEM Club advisors that are here tonight and and realize what a huge difference this is really making in our students' lives, because it's, it's the piece that adds the equity into our science fair. Because otherwise, there's so many students that wouldn't have the opportunity to work on a project if they might, might not have the support or resources at home. So um hoping to build this back up, you know, to be honest, I'm proud that we were able to do it virtually during the pandemic, so at least we kept it going. So anyway, the goals are to to build it back up. We had seven out of nine middle schools this year, so not too bad. But, thank you.
Thank you, again. Thank you all. Congratulations. Okay, so.
If we could just, yes, just to recognize that, uh, you know, this future belongs to our children, and I really believe that Lowell Public Schools is going to be the highest-performing school district in the Commonwealth, because we're going to be following the lead of these amazing young people that are here tonight and across all of our schools. So if we can give them another round of applause. And our kids thrive when our teachers thrive, so if we can also recognize our teachers that are here this evening. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, uh, now we will move on to the minutes. I need a motion to approve the special meetings and the regularly scheduled meeting minutes of the Lowell School Committee of April 12, 2023, and April 19, 2023, and to place them on file. Motion by Ms. Del Rossi, seconded by Mr. Lay. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. And now we're at 4.1, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of the, oh, wait, we just did that, sorry. I'm a little rusty at this, I apologize. Uh, so now we go to permission to enter. 5.1, does anyone have any questions or comments on permission to enter? I'm looking for my copy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, the question I have on Middlesex Community College for $300,000. That's, uh, is that a grant that came, or was it part of our operating budget?
That would, that would come to me. Um, Madam Chair, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry, I thought that I had, Mr. Lay had a question? And Dr. Boyd?
Thank you.
I thought his question was to Ms. Turner, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's a, so, uh, appreciate the question, committee member Lay. So there's two parts to this. So first, this is part of your operating budget, it'll be within, it's also a core part of the strategic plan. So this opportunity here is for the committee to recognize this being part of the strategy going forward. You've heard from a number of children, this is uh speaking and testifying to the value of this program. So typically, this is an MOU that's uh signed between myself and President Sisson. Given the transition of leadership that's going forward, we felt this was an important opportunity for the school committee to also approve this as being part of the continued commitment of Lowell Public Schools going forward, so that we can uh solidify the enrollment for our young people at Middlesex uh going into the next semester.
100% support of the program. Great program. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Just a quick question. So a, a one-year tuition-free experience, does that mean five courses to semester? I'm just, you know, trying to get an understanding of what that really means, in terms of credits and.
Dr. Boyd?
Thank you. Ms. Desmond?
Uh, so that they get a full-year uh experience at Middlesex Community College that anyone who would register uh for courses would have. So it would be five courses, five free-credit courses in uh the fall, and five three-credit courses in the spring. Um, we have a um point person on campus at Middlesex Community College who provides mentorship and advising for these students. But these students are also con, still connected to Lowell High School as they graduate this spring. Um, and then when they transition to Middlesex Community College for uh next year, we uh provide guidance and advice over the summer as they're logging on to the uh information system at Middlesex and sort of learning more about a college experience. Uh, we, we focus on uh providing this opportunity for students who are m, most likely a first-generation college student. Uh, and so the hope is that we are able to continue our relationships with the students from the high school perspective. Uh, one of the advisors in the College and Career Center um is the point person for that, Ms. Heather Brunner. She was here um a couple weeks ago when we honored um the, the 27 students that completed the program this current year. Uh, and so the, the, one of the exciting pieces is that we are going to be able to offer this opportunity to 37 students uh this coming uh fall. We um just completed the program uh for this year and we um had 27 students. And so the idea is the, the further along we go, the more opportunities we're going to have to open spots to continue to grow this program.
Dr. Boyd?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's important also to recognize that uh time and time again, through the hard work of our staff, Lowell Public Schools in partnership with Middlesex Community College has been recognized as one of the flagship early college programs across the Commonwealth. We've been called upon to share about our program experiences and learnings, and that flagship uh kind of designation, it's not a formal designation, but it's a recognition of the types of experiences our children are getting because of the extraordinary partnership with our, with Middlesex Community College and the hard work of our staff. So uh with that, Madam Chair, I would uh enthusiastically recommend approval as written.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve?
Enthusiastic.
Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
Uh, so now we are at the important, part of the agenda under unfinished business. Um, item 6.1, discussion and deliberation of options and timeline for the hiring of an interim superintendent. Review of job description, consideration of guidance from MASC. So I believe you all had a copy of the job description. I'm wondering if we had any um comments and thoughts on, I thought we should just start with the job description? Does that make sense? Okay, any thoughts? Ms. Thompson?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I think, well, obviously, it's not up to date, so that would be the first, you know, notable thing. I think it was done in 2018 to be used for 20, for Dr. Boyd. Certain things that I did note, um, obviously, we would need more information about the rates, such as dropout rate, but also to um speak towards something that Dr. Boyd's administration did um take on that's not really, um, not really as pronounced as I would like it to be, is his uh kind of commitment to the DEIB, so diversity, equity, inclusion, and I would even add belonging. And that's not really, um, really sitting anywhere specifically in the job description. And it was something that he and his administration really leaned into. I think that it's moving forward, that's going to be one of the criteria for us that is very important, and I think it needs to be added into this job description. And um that is all I have to say. Thank you.
And I'm wondering, is this the job description that will be for the permanent, or is this for the interim, or do you see it as both? Anybody who wants to?
I would think right now we're just focusing on the interim. I mean, that for me needs to be added regardless on both interim and the.
But just to be clear.
Yes, but we're just speaking towards interim right now.
So maybe to add a statement right after the first sentence in the job description, and to your point, to update all the quick facts about Lowell Public Schools, that things, the numbers that have changed since 2018, the membership of the school committee, the dropout rates, those things. Okay? Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. So as we look at this, and you, please correct me, Dr. Hall, I know you had forwarded it to us, I believe. Um, the, the piece itself was created by MASC as part of our partnership with them when we went through our last um superintendent search. I would say, I know that everyone received, I believe, the um memo from Glenn Kuchar around kind of the, you know, the Plan B um memo of what our options are. At our last meeting, we did take a vote to move forward to try to enlist um an interim for the 23-24 school year. I would say, I would recommend that we reach out to um the Mass Association of School Communities to see if they could serve as our consultant on this, where they would be, uh, they could make the updates to the, the piece, the job description updated, so it's also obviously specific for an interim. And then be able to post it in all the necessary places and be able to um collect the applicants they'd apply to the consultant, MASC, and then the consultant would work with the full committee, however we wanted to to do that, um, to come up with the list of finalists, and we'd be anticipating, I would at least, public interviews with the finalists um at that point. Uh, I know that we, we're talking in a lot of different directions um at the recent meeting around Blue Ribbon, Blue Ribbon Commissions and and all that, and I, I strongly support that uh for our, our full-on superintendent search, which will take place in, uh, during the 23-24 school year. Uh, but I would say that time is of the essence for an interim. Uh, we are right in the heart of the season right now, um, and I would hope for us to be able to move forward quickly. Uh, I know that there was a, a timeline that was recommended at that meeting, I believe by Ms. Doherty. Um, I think as close as we could adhere to that would be the best, but first step I would think would be for tonight, the committee to have to take a vote to uh reach out to, to engage with MASC to take on that consultant's role. I'd make that in the form of a motion, but welcome any comments from the rest of my colleagues.
Uh, so we have that in form, and are you talking about a specific option, option three, in your motion?
I believe that was the one.
Because that's the one that talks about uh an interim?
Yeah.
Okay, so the, the motion is to move forward, engaging MASC for option three as quickly as possible to get the information updated and posted and, and timeline set. And we have a second by Ms. Thompson. Other thoughts on this or questions? So are we comfortable with just having um the update and all that brought, uh, done by MASC? Are they going to bring this back to us so that we can do a, an approval on the job description before it's publicized?
That would be what I'd anticipate. That's how it, during our last search, that's how they function. They created the materials, we had to approve them before they were posted, um, and then it kind of goes through that same process.
And I wonder if we could ask Dr. Hall, in your conversation with um the executive director, Glenn Kuchar, did you get a sense of timing? I mean, I wonder if he could turn this around for us in time for our meeting next Wednesday, so we could actually take a vote.
Uh, we, I, I can contact him tomorrow. Uh, Ms. Doherty, a week might be pretty aggressive, but we can try.
Okay. I mean, I think that that would be ideal for us, we're meeting then, we won't be meeting again, well, I guess the week after, but, because next week's an added meeting for the public hearing. Okay. All right, any other thoughts? We have a motion with a second on the floor. All those in favor?
You might want to do a timeline. It could be money attack, it could be money attack.
I'm sorry?
You might want to do a timeline, a vote.
Oh, okay, do we want to do a roll call on that, just because it's important? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, which I lost, oh, there it is, um, is regarding the 6.1 discussion deliberation, no, we already did that one. 6.2, update from Brody Hardoon Perkins and Keston LLP regarding independent investigation. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Ms. Doherty. Um, I don't see it on our tables tonight. I know that it was forwarded to all uh committee members, I believe, yesterday. We had had a motion for uh BHPK to be able to present to us tonight. Unfortunately, on Tuesday, we heard that Zoom was not an option, so instead, uh, the attorneys did put together a written report. I did share it with the, the superintendent's office so that it could be shared out with all committee members. I believe you got a hard copy of it last night, if I'm not mistaken? Okay, great. Uh, during our executive session, so everyone should have had it in hand. I apologize that it wasn't in time for the original packet. It is, you know, basically an update of where they are in this process. Um, I, any questions that? Any questions that anyone may have, if you feel free to ask. The only two things I think that we needed to do, and unfortunately, I don't have it in front of me, but we needed to set, oh, now I do, because that's the way the world should work. We needed to set two dates, two deadlines. So the first would be, and this was the recommendation of the attorneys, that we set a deadline of Friday, May 19th, for people to reach out to BHPK to be considered part of this. They had said, you know, no later than May 26th. I'd make a motion that we go with the May 19th deadline, and we could do that first.
Okay. So we have a motion by Ms. Martin to have the attorneys continue to receive complaints through May 19. Do I have a second on that? Second by Ms. Chun. Any other comments or questions about this particular item? Okay, let's do a roll call on this.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Six sheyes, one absent.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
And then, the second question that they had asked for us to respond on was placing a time limit in terms of how long a period would be included in the investigation. Their recommendation was two years back from when we initially got the first letter from former city solicitor O'Connor. I'm not sure what that exact date is, but if someone could, you know, two years, it was November...
I think it was November 20, the date of her email.
So that was November 20th of '22, so any claims that go beyond, that happened before 2020, November of 2020, would basically not be included in this investigation. I think they're just trying to put some parameters around things.
Right, try to keep a scope on it, I think.
Exactly, exactly. So again, I'd make that in the form of a motion to limit it to that two-year period.
Okay. And I see Ms. Del Rossi has her hand up. Ms. Del Rossi?
As an employee of this district, who, a former employee of this district, who has experienced plenty of these internal hiring issues before this administration, I would highly suggest that this go at least four years before 2020, at least, or at least two years before 2020 to the 2018, or at some point, to, or at least a superintendent or two superintendents before Dr. Boyd, I would have to say, because this investigation also needs to be fair at the same time. And these practices have been in place for a long time in Lowell Public Schools, and I just want to make that very clear amongst this committee, amongst everybody.
Thank you. Ms. Chun, did you have your hand up?
I just kind of want to agree on what Mr. Rossi just mentioned, that we want to go far beyond the two years. I think there has been complaint that's far beyond the two years that they're asking for, the 2020, so we wanted to go a little bit further beyond that. Thank you. I agree with Mr. Rossi.
Ms. Thompson?
I would like to make a motion to have a five-year scope on the investigation.
And I'd take that as a friendly amendment, that's fine.
Okay. So I'm fine to put that forward, I just would like to, if I could, from up here, say, I think we're looking at quite an extensive investigation then. I don't know that it benefits us to go back five years, and this is not, I mean, Mr. Rossi used the word "fair," this is not targeted to any one individual. It's not targeted to one administration over another, we're going to go back 20 years. I mean, the idea is, what's happening systemically now that we can address or we should be addressing? And I, my concern is that if we go too, back too far, it could become very time-consuming and expensive, and I'm just going to say that, but if that's what the will of the body is, because I am looking to get at the root of what some of these concerns are. Ms. Martin, you had your hand up?
I would just say, again, this, the investigation as a whole is being driven by the individuals who are coming forward. So I think, you know, we've set the timeline of May 19th as a deadline, so I think, you know, I think most people have already, who have wanted to, you know, bring their concerns forward, probably have already done that. So I don't think we'll be seeing a wave of people from the 80s, you know, who have a problem. But, so I do think five is a reasonable number, so I'd be comfortable with that.
Okay, so we have a friendly amendment to Ms. Martin's motion to go back five years, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Mr. Lay, with, did you want to...
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to speak. I understand the will of the body, who wants to go far, to five years, but what's triggered this investigation was from the previous solicitor's letter that claimed about the complaint of two individuals, and now we go extend all the way to five years. I'm just awed how this investigation has changed from two individuals, now we go back all the way to five years. I'm okay with it if the will of the body want to go that far and want to spend that much money.
Ms. Thompson?
It was eight individuals, that then became six, but what I would like to say is that we have no idea when the people were speaking their complaints about, when they actually started. So I figure during the pandemic, that's kind of a weird time to entirely gauge. The reason for the five years is I feel like it's getting a full quantitative assessment, and so that's why I brought that up. But again, I will go with the will of the body.
Okay. Roll call?
Mr. Lay?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Five yeas, one day, one absent.
If there aren't any other questions, I'd submit the BBPK, a BHPK report as a report of progress, and we'll be reporting back to the full committee as the investigation continues.
Thank you. So we have a motion report of progress by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Thompson. All those in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Okay, now we're moving on to item 7.1, motions. First motion by Susie Chun, requests the superintendent to take a look at the Freshman Academy and determine what needs to be fixed in order to prevent further leaks onto the hallway floor. Second by Ms. Martin. Ms. Chun?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. There has been some issues that's been happening at the Freshman Academy, especially in terms of the leakage in the hallway, and for me, brings a lot of concern, because we all know that there are some images that I received that has some mold that's growing from the ceiling, and there are trash buckets that are teachers' uses to dispose of trash in their classroom, they're using it to catch the drippings from the ceiling, so that's something that's really alarming to me. One, there's mold growing, that's considered hazardous to our students and our staff. You know, it might not take effect in terms of their health at this point, but eventually, it might affect them in the long run. That's the one thing that I really want to bring forth to our committee members, and also, I don't think this is just a school committee issue, I think it's also the city issues. They really need to look into our buildings especially. And we know the Freshman Academy is one of the newly, I mean, I went to the city magnet and the arts magnets back in the days, and I can tell you, it's one of the, considering from our other buildings that we utilizes, and I feel like, you know, this is something that, it really breaks my heart when I see these images of the ceiling tiles being, you know, it's, there's a hole, and there's water buckets that our staff are using to contain the flow of the water. So especially now that spring is here, there's a lot of rain that's coming out, so that's the one issue that we really need to look into, and also the cafeteria too. So that's, I really, again, I want to push this. One, it's health, two, safety of our students. Ceiling tiles are falling, so I don't know who can be accountable for this, but it's just not the school committee members' issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chun. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Next motion by Eileen Del Rossi and Jacqueline Doherty, requests the superintendent to collaborate with the Curriculum Department to strategically implement a strong, continuous research-based reading, writing, and math intervention program that involves progress monitoring for the, that involves progress monitoring for the class of 2031, current fourth graders, and 2032, current third graders, that will follow these students until they graduate high school. Ms. Del Rossi?
Thank you. As everyone knows, these are the grades that were most impacted academically and socially. I would say, I'm sorry, I wouldn't even say socially, but academically, by COVID-19. And their academic scores, when, I mean, I, I am a, I have to admit that I am a third and fourth grade teacher in a district, and I see kids crying when they take the third and fourth grade MCAS, and it literally breaks my heart to see them have to take this test that is nowhere near where they are at, and not even a regular, a student. Like, these kids need to be progress monitored through academic assessments. Reading, writing, and arithmetic needs to be brought back, and they need to be assessed of where they are. They need to be assessed from maybe 10 years back of where third and fourth graders were, and it needs to be maybe brought back to where they are right now, and maybe that discrepancy score needs to be analyzed a little bit, and maybe we need to look at what type of intervention programs we need to bring in for these students, because these students need some serious interventions, and it needs to no longer be a white elephant in the room, because these students really need some serious intervention programs, and they are struggling. And teachers see it, administrators see it, and we really need to address this overall in our districts, and I would just like to just bring this to the forefront, because writing, I feel like, is no longer even an issue in our districts overall, like, just regular writing, like, sentence writing, you know, and writing a sentence, but it, reading and math, but writing also, needs to be addressed in progress monitoring for these students until they graduate. These are our most at-risk students throughout the district, and they really need some type of program to spiral with them until they graduate, to assure their success overall, and we owe this to this, to these students overall. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Del Rossi. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Next motion by Eileen Del Rossi, requests the superintendent to work with the Facilities Department to assure all middle school bathroom stall doors are secured, installed, and any type of negative graffiti is removed so that all students feel secure going to the bathroom. Seconded by Ms. Martin. Ms. Del Rossi?
I've heard this complaint overall through many of students in civics projects, that there are unhinged doors and graffiti throughout various bathrooms in the district and middle schools, and that it's an overall issue in terms of them just feeling safe and okay with going to the bathroom, and just having to do their private business and to feel secure, and that's just a basic need, and I just want to make sure that this is a secure area for all of our students, male and female, throughout the district, and this is the reason for this motion. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Obviously, happy to support this motion. My question would be, are these types of situations able to be managed by our onsite custodial staff, or does this also, does this, do these necessitate work orders and kind of going through the city system?
It would depend on the extent of the, of the need. In most cases, our custodians can manage this internally.
I mean, I would think. I would think that, you know, particularly graffiti and just kind of making sure that doors are, you know, secure on their hinges and whatnot. So I guess we'll be looking, we'll get a report back, but just, I do feel more confident knowing that we can handle it internally and be able to kind of ensure that all of these are being taken care of in a swift fashion. Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Ayes have it. Next motion, 7.4, by Eileen Del Rossi, requests the superintendent collaborate with the Curriculum Department and Special Education Department to do an inventory of and report on all reading, writing, and math programs that the district still has within the 28 schools within the district. Seconded by Ms. Martin. Ms. Del Rossi?
I shut it off. This also could probably have a lot to do with my 7.2 motion, but also has a lot to do with me working within the district as a special education teacher and seeing the various programs that we have bought over the years, and we have recite, we have stored through various schools, and I would just like an inventory of, we have a lot of great reading programs, we have a lot of great special ed programs, we have a lot of great overall programs, and I would just like to see what we have overall for the district before maybe we decide to make any type of purchase, essentially. So thank you.
Ms. Martin?
I would recommend to the, to the maker of the motion, if she was comfortable, to direct this to the Curriculum Subcommittee, so that then we could kind of have that more full-blown conversation in Subcommittee, and then bring a resolution hopefully to the full committee.
Yes. Ms. Del Rossi is okay with that friendly amendment? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Ayes have it. Next motion, 7.5, by Eileen Del Rossi, requests the superintendent report on the special education reading, writing, and math curriculum used in the elementary, middle school, and high school level, and the equity of the staff having access to these curriculums throughout the district. Seconded by Ms. Martin. Ms. Del Rossi?
Thank you. Again, through a lot of my experience, a lot of special education teachers' curriculum is brought in through a child's IEP and through their own resources. Not a lot is brought in usually from a special education curriculum given through the district. I don't know what is given through the district as a special education program, and I'm wondering what is given as a special education program for the district in terms of reading, writing, and a math program, and what is given to special education teachers in terms of equity, and saying, "Welcome, you're a special education teacher at the elementary level, this is what you're using as reading, this is what you're using as writing, this is what you're using as math. If you need something else, please let us know." I've never had that experience, and I think if any special ed teacher actually had that experience, it would help them along the way, and it could actually help in retention of a lot of teachers, actually, in our district to boot, so. to boot. So, I guess, this is my, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Ayes have it. Motion passes. Next motion, seven by, do you want to, I think I can just, I think they can speak for themselves unless there's questions, if that's all right. The first motion by me, requests the superintendent provide the committee with a report on three windowless rooms in the 1980s Ellicus Building with air quality issues. The report should include testing dates, times, and results over the current school year, as well as what's being done to mitigate the continued high-level readings as reported at the Lowell Board of Health's April meeting. Sec, I need a second. Seconded by Ms. Thompson. I think the motion speaks for itself. I don't know if anybody has any questions. Dr. Boyd, if you understand what I'm looking for here. Okay, great. All those in favor, aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Next motion by me, requests the superintendent provide the committee with an update on current usage of the TV studio at Lowell High School with a plan to increase it, as well as a plan to return to using the broadcast-equipped room at Central Office to hold school committee board meetings, subcommittee meetings as soon as possible. We used to have this space, as some of you may recall. I need a second for that motion. Ms. Martin. I don't know if, if Dr., I mean, there's a two-part to this. I'm looking at the Lowell High School studio and the subcommittee broadcast space we used to have at Central Office. I don't know if there's any questions for clarification on what I, my intention here. Dr. Boyd? Oh, you're okay with it? Okay, good. So, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you. Now, we go to subcommittee reports. 8.1, finance subcommittee, fi, report and approval of the meeting of Thursday, April 20, 2023. Dominic Lay, chairperson. Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Budget Subcommittee meeting met on Monday, April 20, 20th. Member attended were, was Ms. Doherty and Mr. Rossi. Chief Financial Officer, Billy Joe Turner, presented the next school committee, I mean, the next school year budget, year 23, 24 budget. This budget derived, derived from recommendations from community, including school site councils, parents, teachers, and individual schools. The total of the budget was $295.36 million. And out of that, we have $228,693,000, is from the state contribution, and the, about $13 million come from the city cash, and 48.4 million comes from the grant, which includes the ESF money. But tomorrow, we will be having a more detailed budget presentation, so stay tuned, and we will present that in more detail. So, I'd like to present it as a form of, as a report in progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lay. So, we have a motion to accept the report as a report of progress. Seconded by Ms. Thompson. All those in favor, aye. Motion passes. Okay, and now we go to Section 9, reports of the superintendent. 9.1, FY24 Recommended Budget. Dr. Boyd.
Thank you. I'm really proud to present to you the FY24 proposed budget. I want to thank our finance department, all of our principals, the members of our school site councils, and every member of our community who took part in the budgeting process. This is formally now handed over and released to you as a school committee. You will then engage, or I should say, for the community, the school committee will now engage in its formal hearing process tomorrow night at 6:30 is our first hearing time. So, in between tonight and tomorrow night, committee members, I would ask you to fully read through the budget document that has been provided to you. It was provided to you on last Friday as part of your packet. It is online for the entire community's viewing. We are prepared to share it with you. The typical process for this school committee is to then move line by line through the budget. Ms. Turner will then answer any questions that you have, and we will work to make any adjustments that the committee might bring forward. Between then, in your adoption date for the community, which is May 17, after the May 17 school committee vote, it then gets submitted over to City Council. City Council is currently scheduled to take action on the city's overall municipal budget, for which the school department's budget is a portion of that on June 6, so that we can then move into the fiscal year. For the community, we are in the strongest financial position that this school district, as far as we can observe, has ever been in. This is a really solid, balanced budget that represents a significant investment in our classrooms. I'm extremely proud to release this to you tonight formally, and look forward to tomorrow night's discussion. With that, I submitted as a form, a report of progress. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Ms. Martin?
I had a couple of quick questions. So, the, the budget that, the document we received tonight, is that an update, or is it the same as what we received over the weekend?
The document that you, oh, Ms. Turner?
[laughing]
The document that you received today is the same as what you have, that you had over the weekend, but it wasn't printed yet in a formal document like this.
Oh, I, just in the binder, but it's the same thing.
It is. And then I also put on your desk
My next question.
Cheat sheets. It's the same information that was shared with you in the budget itself, but instead of you digging through all the tiny numbers, I did a cheat sheet so that you could see every change that occurred in the budget by page. And then I did a second cheat sheet that shows all of the additions by school. I will re, upload this tomorrow morning as a supplement, so it's not additional information, it's supplemental. But I'll, I'm going to re-sort it so that you could see each school, you know, so that, instead of it, by position.
So, the, the first piece of this is every change? So, it's every addition, every subtraction?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And then this is just the, the same information, but sorted by school?
Yes. So, the second document is really only showing what each school did with the money that they received, the additional Fair Student Fund in, where the first page includes that, as well as Central Office.
Okay. Perfect. I just wanted to understand. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? I think this is a perfect time to ask for additional information that you think might be helpful. As Ms. Turner mentioned, she's extrapolated the information that's already in the book into these different formats, cheat sheet, by page, showing each change by page, an analysis by school. I don't know if anybody else had other information they thought that would be helpful to have extrapolated. Any thoughts? I mean, I'd be, in all of this, I know she's gonna, Ms. Turner, you're gonna get that online tomorrow, right? I had a request, I had asked for information about the alternative programs, and I had the motion a couple of weeks ago in April, and I was wondering if Ms. Turner could add a line that gives us the year prior to the pandemic, just for comparison. And I know that might take longer than tomorrow, which would be fine, because we have tomorrow night, and we have next Wednesday as well. So, I think we have time to get some of that information in a format that will help us be informed as we make decisions. By, I'm wondering, do we have anything that lists just the new positions, Ms. Turner? Over the last few years, when we're looking at the growth of the district through the ESF money?
So, the documents shared today only show an increase of positions for this current year, but I can add that to my list of things to add. A slide with all positions added with ESF funds. Over the last couple of years, I can gather that. However, I do want to point this out. There are times where you have approved 30 social workers, you've approved it, but then we might have only filled 20. So, it does get confusing between what we decided to do and what actually happened. But I will still try to give you some type of format of all of the ESF spend, ESF-funded positions.
That, that's an excellent example. So, in a case where we voted, because I think this committee understood very early on, the stress is on our, our students, the social, emotional stresses on our families as well. If we had a situation like that one, where we hit, we approved 30, we only ended up hiring 20, how does that now sit on our budget? Does it sit as this funding for an extra 10 positions, or is it only listed as funding for 20?
So, what would happen is the money would flow into vacancy savings at the time, and we would reallocate the dollars then. But no, we would not have cut the positions. If you approved something throughout the year, even if we did not fill it, we might spend the money differently in that current year, but we did not change it in the budget. It would still be there for the, what you had approved, unless, of course, it was part of the school's money, because they do get to, through the Fair Student Fund and process, decide how they're going to spend their money. So, in answer to your question, it's still there. If you said 30, we didn't take it away unless you wanted to take it away. That would be done during this cycle, the budget cycle.
So, those positions are still being advertised then for the new school year? If we had a, 10 positions that we had funded that we didn't fill last year, are they going to be looking to hire the, are we, as a district, looking to hire them now for the new school year? Dr. Boyd?
Thank you. I think I can answer that. The school committee's budget is one fiscal year at a time, so we have no authority as, as your administrators to advertise anything for the next fiscal year until the bu, school committee goes through this budget adoption. Upon this budget adoption, we'll go through the advertising. The only difference there are continuous positions of the, a teacher in a second-grade classroom, a teacher in a third-grade classroom, who may be retiring. Those are assumed positions, but support positions are not. They would be then approved within this budget, budget document, and then they will be posted accordingly, hence the reason to move forward. And I do think, if I could, just for, I want to make sure of clarity, because I'm getting some questions offline here. The, for the community, the expedited timeline here of a matter of a couple of weeks for the committee is in addition to the five-month process that has been built out since January. So, this is the culmination of an extended timeline that has, where the committee has received extended input, and where, as a superintendent and as a school team, we facilitated those conversations. The culminating exercise for the committee here is the committee will facilitate now budget hearings during this month. So, it's an expedited timeline this month, because it's the culminating timeframe of an extended budgeting period. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. And I know we're using like the social workers as an example, which I think is a perfect one. As we go through this, as we go through the line-by-line review, will the administration be able to point those out to us? I don't think it would be immediately evident, based on past, you know, on, on the way our budget documents are, because as you say, it would just say 30 social workers. It wouldn't say, we could only get 20, maybe we, because the committee may want to reconsider if, you know, given what hiring is like, maybe it's, we want to move forward with 25, hire five, plan to hire five more for the next school year, but that other five may go into abeyance, and we may choose to do something else with that. Just so, like, if there could be a red flag on those specific, like, positions where you've seen, you know, significant vacancy savings?
Ms. Turner?
So, I can give one example right now. I don't think, just so you know, like, because the schools pick the positions, even if we know that we are, and I'll give an example, the paras, we didn't fill every para position, because we have, we have the competition with the substitute pay rate right now, right? So, we may not fill every para position. But if the school's still elected to try again, then we wouldn't want to take that away, that power away. I also want to point out with the paras, we do, I can point out red flags like this. The sped one-to-one, we, the one-to-one paras for special ed, we had a, I think we had 44 in the budget, thinking we, based on the previous year, but then due to graduations or kids moving out of the district, we only ended up with 25. So, you would see a decrease in the one-to-one paras in the budget. I can point things out like that, you know, so that you're aware of why we made a major decrease because of spending, not spending, hiring problems, or because of lack of need now, if that's what you mean, just to point things out.
Well, I can say again what I mean. So, what I mean is, in those circumstances, I'm not saying this committee is going to decide one way or the other. I mean, if there's, if there was, you know, five para professionals that we weren't able to fill that we still need, we're going to still want to fill them. But what I'd like us to be able to do is understand where those holes are. There may be certain ti, there may be certain instances where we do want to reconsider and, and see if there are other ways we want to spend that money to, you know, to support. And in other cases, we're just going to want to leave it there and try harder to, to fulfill our, our staffing requirements. I just, I wouldn't want us to go through this whole process, and then at the end, we find we've got 10 positions that we know we're never going to fill, just because of the, the nature of the, you know, kind of workforce. Maybe we take the money from those 10 positions and come up with a contractor kind of relationship. So, but if we don't know, and I don't think it's, it will be wildly evident to us going through the, the package. So, I'm just asking, if we could get a heads-up in those specific circumstances, it would make us better, better informed in making these decisions. Thank you.
Any other thoughts? Okay, I think that it looks like we're set for tomorrow night, then. I, I don't think we need a motion or anything, right? Okay, so now we are at 9.2, under reports of the superintendent. Update regarding response to motion ninth graders failing one or more class. Ms. Thompson?
So, I'm the one who asked for this report, and again, it's just, it's scary to me. So, looking at this report, if I'm reading it properly, about one-third of our Latinx Hispanic ninth graders are failing a class. That's a lot. And then, looking at, I believe it's 40% of the students that categorize themselves in multiple races are also failing. What this says to me is that, you know, and again, we had a, a report prior, and I wanted this desegregated data. This says to me that we need this at least quarterly, because I think it's important to be able to see a little bit more through the weeds what's happening, so that we can make, I guess, more formative decisions. So, I appreciate the information being disaggregated. I would just ask in a form of a motion for this to be given to the, given to the committee on a quarterly basis. Thank you.
Motion to provide this information on a quarterly basis by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor, oh, Ms. Martin, did you want to talk? Aye. All those in favor, aye. Passes. Ms. Martin?
I was just curious what active versus non-active means for special education status?
Dr. Boyd?
Thank you. Mr. Skinner?
Active means the child is active in special education. If it's not active, the child's not a special education student.
So, the, the, a special education student that's not participating in special education activities?
The category you referred to is special education status.
Yep.
So, active means the child has an, an individualized education plan, so the child is in, is actively in special education status. The non-active are regular education students that do not have an IEP. That's the lingo that's used to distinguish.
So, like, the 147 students out of 727 freshmen, that's 147 regular ed students?
That's correct.
Out of 727 special ed students?
Out of 727 regular ed students.
And the 39 out of 130? I'm sorry if I'm being dense.
That's okay. The, the 39 out of 130 are the special education students.
So, there are 130 special education students. 39 of them are, are in fa, are in danger of?
Failing.
Are failing one course.
One course. Okay. 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 Thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
The only thing that I was looking for, just, and that just jogged my memory, so thank you, was, I believe we spoke about some students were failing more than one class. I don't see that that's disaggregated here. Is there a way to get that information to know how many? So, are they failing two classes, three classes, or are they entirely failing? And I hate using the terminology, they're failing, but they're not passing. Because they're not failing, they're just, there's an academic need. So, is there a way to get that, so that we're understanding, are they in danger of not being enrolled entirely, or are they failing maybe one, two, three, four, five courses? Is there a way to get that disaggregated data as well?
Dr. Boyd?
Sure. We can, we'll take note of it. I see, Mr. Skinner, is that a reasonable request?
So, can I make a suggestion, if you may, if I may?
So can I make a suggestion, if you, if you may, if I may? You, you talked about a quarterly update. We, we report to the committee key performance indicators quarterly. If you like, I'll add this indicator to the quarter, to the quarterly key performance indicators report, and specifically make sure that it's disaggregated for you when that is reported out. Is that? Thank you.
Any other comments about this report? If I could just say from here, to get 30% Hispanic, 33% multiple, I'd like to know what we're doing to try to help those kids. I mean, that's a separate issue. But, I mean, we realize that this is a huge percentage of the population. And maybe that's a motion for another day, but I, I was astounded when I saw that. So, thank you. Okay, so. Need to accept the reports of the superintendent, nine point one and nine point two, as reports of progress. Motion by Ms. Delay, seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor? Approve. Next motion, nine point three, home education. Need a motion to approve this request for home education? By Ms. Chun, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow? Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
Madam Chair, if I, I could have one quick question to Dr. Boyd. How does this track the number of people seeking home education? Is this like normal for the district, as far as the number? I feel like we've had several, so I was just curious.
Dr. Boyd?
Ms. Desmond?
So this does track fairly normal activity for homeschooling requests. I will say, the number actually is, is down from what we saw during the pandemic years. So we're sort of becoming more normalized with the number again. And oft, oftentimes, it's representative of multiple students within a family, the overall children that are being home educated.
All set? Ms. Thompson? Okay. Thank you. So, ten point one, approval to accept and expend allocated FY23 awards. I need a motion to accept and approve. Any comments? No? Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Lay. Roll call.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow? Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
So now, I need a motion under Convention Conference Request to bundle and approve the Convention Conference Request by, who wants to do it? Ms. Thompson, seconded by Ms. Chun. Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow? Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
We are now at item 12, professional personnel. Need a motion to bundle and approve the professional personnel request, 12.1 and 12.2. Motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Delay. Roll call.
Ms. Delay? Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow? Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
If there is nothing else, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Ms. Thompson?
Sorry, a moment of personal privilege. We did meet with a group of young people yesterday with Project Learn, and was, we were so, so impressed by them. They are doing work on anti-racism and would love to be able to give the committee potentially a training on things of anti-racism nature. And I would love for us to consider that. The seniors specifically wanted to do it before they graduated, so I'd love for us to look at our calendar, potentially have a special meeting to have training. I think that would be very helpful and then supportive of our young people. So I would ask that the office pull a date that we can have that training.
Okay. So motion, motion to pull a date. I'm wondering if we could add it to one of the meetings on the calendar already, May 17? I know that Ju, June 7 is the Lowell High graduation, so be looking at something in May, kind of like instead of a spotlight on excellence, but I would leave that up to the administration to come up with a recommendation. So the motion is to ask the student leaders from Project Learn to present a professional development on anti-racism to the Lowell School Committee before June 7. And to, you know, have the administration discuss it and poll with the committee when we could get the chambers to do that. Seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor? Say aye. Aye. Oh, good, we got it. Ms. Chun also had her hand up.
Yes. I would like to have a, a moment of privilege to speak about something. So tomorrow, at the State House, there is a resolution being adopted by Representative Vanna Howard, commemorating the Cambodian genocide, April 17, 1975. That's when the falling of the Phnom Penh, and that's where the Khmari Rouge regime started to take over Cambodia during that time. And there will be a resolution being, take place over at the State House if our members or committee members that have availability, or our community members would like to attend this monumental event to help support our Cambodian community who have been through a lot of trial and tribulation during the Cambodian genocide. Please join us tomorrow at the State House. It's going to happen at 11:00 a.m., and I will be there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Chun.
Want to say where, Ms. Chun? You want to say where in the State House?
I have to check my email on that, but if, I can send our committee members some more further information.
Do you know, Ms. Delay?
If you don't mind, the chamber, Representative's Chamber, House, the House Chamber.
Perfect. Thank you. Motion to adjourn by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Rossi. Thank you all. Good night.